Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
The move.
Moved by George Lawrence.
I'll second.
Seconded by Felix Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Lucy, would you please read the...
Hello? To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5M resolution accepting grant forms from Mississippi Tennis Association. To our substitute exhibit only to item 5P resolution accepting the bid of Gerald Kasevich. We're substituting item 5Q resolution authorizing payment to JW Puckett and Company.
Move the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Have a motion to move the agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Felix Gines. Gentlemen, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We'll begin with the mayor's report.
I don't have much to report on, do I, Mike? I don't know. I think, you know, we're moving along and trying to figure out where we are with regard to the business opportunities or lack of business opportunities with dollars and where we're, you know, beginning to fill the budget holes and recovery is, of course, on everyone's mind. And we're still looking at the numbers as they come down from, you know, the COVID numbers and hospitalizations. So it's very fluid. We don't know when we get the numbers and what it really means, but I think we're not overwhelmed with the hospitalizations. And we hope this thing gets over, you know, sooner than later. We'll do, I think, our message regarding that is on Mondays and Fridays now. Yeah, Mondays and Fridays. So as these numbers, and they've been erratic when they release it. So we keep those running 14-day averages. And hopefully, there won't be a serious enough change in those numbers to go backwards, and we don't want to go backwards. So that's pretty much it, but we do have one opportunity with regard to the census. Mike, I think you want to say something. That's not a drive, that's a short putt.
It's recorded on a machine. It's recorded on a machine. You gotta go through the mic.
And Ms. Perryman? Well, will you state your name and who you're with for the record, please?
I don't think the mic is on. I can't hear. It's the mayor's mic.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Much better.
Okay, so my name is Alitra Perryman. I'm with the U.S. Census Bureau. So you should each have one of the Census Weekly Update newsletters and a census pen on page two of the newsletter. It shows census response rates by county for all of Mississippi as of June 11th. Now, the most recent numbers as of June 21st has Biloxi at 57.7% response rate. We are doing pretty well, but there is still time for people to respond either online or by phone. They have until October 31st to respond. Here on the Gulf Coast, the census office is in Gulfport and has completed what we call update leave, which is where the enumerators go to homes that do not receive mail in a mailbox. They receive a P.O. box type of mail situation. The enumerators have gone to those houses and left questionnaires on doorknobs. So that's some of your rural areas in the county. That operation is complete, and they're starting to train enumerators on non-response follow-up. They will go to households where no one has responded to the census and knock on the door and do the questionnaire at the door. So we're still pushing people to respond to the census online or by phone to avoid that knock on the door. The trainings have started. They will go throughout July, and enumerators will start hitting the streets at the end of July. Any questions? Yes, sir.
So the enumerators, these are the people who come to the non-responding residents?
Correct.
Right, and folks can still go complete the census by phone if they like? They can still complete it online, but these enumerators really are checking on folks because they have received no response?
Correct. Absolutely correct. So there are some addresses that are vacation properties, so you normally would not get a response, but enumerators have to go to those homes three times to verify that those are not occupied on a regular basis before they can take them off the workload. So anyone, any address that has not responded to the census will receive a knock on the door at least three times.
Right, and this will continue through August, I'm assuming?
This will continue through the beginning of October.
Okay.
The census operation has been delayed due to COVID, but it will continue. The trainings are much smaller than they typically are. We're training about three to four people at a time. And then they do an online training, and they receive their workload electronically and go out in the streets. They will have PPE.
Okay, and they will have, I guess, a shirt or a badge or an ID or something? How will folks know that this is a census?
They will have an official census badge. They will also have census-issue U.S. equipment. So their iPad, which is how they take the information, has a huge census backing to it. They will also have special iPhones that say Department of Commerce on the back of them. So everything that they have says U.S. Census, and people can ask for their ID.
Right, thank you.
I have a question. So you're still hiring and recruiting, or y'all finished with that process?
So as we go through the training logs, it's difficult to get people to come in. We have a lot of no-shows. So they are going back into the system and pulling additional employees, so it's not too late to apply. But it really depends on how many people show up for the trainings. And since we're training just a few at a time, it's taking longer to see who's not showing up.
Okay, thank you.
But 2020census.gov/jobs, anyone can apply.
How do you follow up on people that didn't respond? Just by their street address or by their names?
By the address. So there is an address file that we're using. And anyone who has not responded for that address, it's loaded into what we call a workload. And then the enumerators are assigned an area, and in that area, they go to each of those addresses. If no one is home, if someone responds at the door, they notate that and ask the census questions right then and there. But if no one is home, they have to make three attempts before they can get that address off their workload.
I need to ask you a question regarding that. Can that list, can that be shared with us so we can help also in different areas? You know, can that be shared with the city in order to encourage, you know, we can do some visiting, knock on the door without the census, but we want to be able to say, hey, there'll be an opportunity for someone, so please talk. And that's, you know, we can cross-reference and do some of those things that will help this, you know. And you might want to repeat to the council, if this is worth about $2,000 a person?
Oh, yes.
Sharing a revenue, so it's important to everyone that it's counted accurately.
Yes, so I will ask, I will ask the operations director if they can share that. Everything we do is confidential, so I'm not sure if they can share those addresses.
No, our addresses, and maybe we can cross-reference.
Right.
Addresses, our addresses, so I'd like to just need to know where we need to start.
I will ask. Now, I can tell you the low-response rate tracks, which one of them is along Highway 90 in Ward 1. But in Ward 1, you have a lot of vacation property. So your rate is low, but those households may not be actual households where someone lives year-round.
Tell us, and we can cross-reference, and we know where those charter malls are, we know where apartments and those kinds of things where people are.
Right.
Another thing, if we know where to help you with regard to grilling down, is where we would be happy to assist and deliver this. We want that 100%, we don't leave anything on paper.
I agree. I will work with you and figure out how to get that done. Great question. Any other questions?
Do they have to be U.S. citizens to register?
Yes, to work?
U.S. citizens.
To work or to respond to the census?
Register.
No.
No, I'm asking, did it have to be a United States citizen to register for the census? Do they count, or are they just working there and going back where they come from?
You don't have to be a U.S. citizen to be counted in the census. You do have to be a U.S. citizen to work for the census.
Okay, you know, we have a lot of them come down here, the Mexicans and a lot of Vietnamese, they come here, work the boats, and then they leave. They go somewhere else, go to Texas. They actually don't live here. They just come here and work in it.
So the census questionnaire asks how long you've lived at that address. So they do need to respond to the census and let the Census Bureau determine if that is considered their permanent residence. But there are questions on the questionnaire that ask how long, how many months out of the year you live at this address.
Right, just was wondering. Like I said, in Biloxi, there's a lot of them come and go a lot.
And for college students, they are typically counted at school. However, if you have a college student and you put them on your census form, that is fine. The Census Bureau has a very advanced way of weeding out duplications, so that's just fine. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perryman.
That concludes my report. I'm gonna have colleagues or something.
Understand how we got to where we are with census. That almost a year ago, we got a disc in the mail with all the known addresses in the city of Biloxi. We then spent better part of a couple of months looking at all the new addresses that had been built since 2010, all the new apartments and so forth, and adding to that list. And then we took that and sent it back to Census. Then there was one more iteration where it came back to us with some errors, and we fixed some things, sent it back to them. And that then got locked down, and that's the list of addresses that got mailed. So there's still, there's still lots of people that were not on that list. For example, all the airmen at Keesler were not in the address list that we were working with. And we've been working with Keesler to try and encourage all those young airmen to fill out their census form, just go online and do their census. And now, we're not seeing that data yet. We're not seeing the data that's coming out of Keesler because it's, we're not seeing anything other than the percentage of people who got something in the mail and who've responded to it, which is like 57%. We still, we were 70% in 2010, so we got a ways to go.
But we have time in order to do that. I was just talking with Alitra about, you know, having some idea where we need to put our efforts and encourage our efforts.
Good question.
One moment. George?
Y'all have sent an email out to all the workers in the city of Biloxi, have all of them responded? Between them and their family, that's a lot of people. That's a couple thousand people. So have we done all the employees and their families, full-time workers, anybody?
I think we did that in April, but, you know, I don't know. We can research just by response to email if they've filled it out.
You know?
You know, if we get who has filled it out by address, then we'll, we can, you know, again, encourage them if they haven't done it to do it.
Well, it's so easy to get them to do it through the city and through their departments, you know, it's pretty easy, put it online. So there's no reason for all of them not to be signed up already. Thank you.
So the reason you're being briefed today is because you and I are all on the Biloxi Complete Count Committee. We were, by resolution, sometime back, we appointed ourselves part of the Complete Count Committee. So we need your help in each of those wards to spread the word, whether to get the pastors to speak at the churches or whatever social media opportunity you have. At your place, you find a product that the census people did for us. And we'll get that to you electronically. In the case of Councilman Barrett, we'll get it to you with your name spelled correctly. And you'll be able to stick that on any kind of social media and just kind of a message, a message from your councilman kind of thing. So that was a product that the census people gave us this week. And that's the end of that story.
That concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council reports will begin with Paul Tisdale.
Yes, thank you. I do want to note that DNA Underground's contractor, remember, they do, I guess we have them on retainer, so to speak, for these jobs that are either time-consuming or too big to be classified as small jobs, but too small for spend a lot of time and effort. I think this was part of the contracting out for private services that Mr. Deming noted a couple of months back. But they did a really good job over on the Churchill Ditch. We had a sinkhole there that was just in effect. When they got down to what caused that, it turned into a major, a big project out there. Took them two weeks, did a very good job, kept the worksite clean and everything. That's it. I just want, I know we use them for those kinds of jobs. They just did a very good job from what I could see. Thank you.
Like our indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contracts for concrete and sidewalks and asphalt, that's a new mechanism we're using this year, be able to fast-track work. So we awarded a contract after bidding it out to a large number of companies. We chose them, and what we do is just to issue a task order each time when we need work. And so that seems to be working out pretty well. We'll rebid that again this year.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilwoman Newman? Councilwoman Lawrence?
Yes, we had another great weekend in the city of Biloxi. The beaches were packed, the boat ramps were packed, the city was packed. It's a good thing. I know maybe the social distance might not be there all the time, but, you know, it's still, it's good to see that much activity again in the city of Biloxi. And they had a little fundraiser for the Western Fire Station Number 3, probably one of the oldest fire stations left, you know? They tried to create a little money. So I don't know if we need to do something sometime to help them, if they need some money to fix the building. Because that's something, that's another unique, just like the Sanger, that's a unique building left in the city of Biloxi, has made it through everything. And, you know, we grew up there doing that drinking fall staff and going to the fire and day parade, it was way bigger at that time than the Mardi Gras.
Merritt Brunus was playing there.
Yeah, you wasn't around, but back when you was young.
I was stealing beer out the back door.
But anyway, it was always a big thing, and they're trying to keep that thing going. I think so. If anytime the city of Biloxi, if we can support them and help them, I think we need to step up and do that. At least they try to raise money and keep the thing open, you know, for their little museum. So it's a good thing for the city of Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Barrett?
No report.
Councilman Gines?
Yeah, I noticed Oscarinda didn't show up for the infrastructure progress, so I need to catch up with Walt on that later. Also wanted to thank the mayor, CAO, Chief Miller, Chief Boney, all our police officers that came out. We had a great weekend, three trifecta. The march was great. Mayor got up and spoke, inspiring words. Juneteenth at Hembry Beck Park, and of course, the Wade Inn. And the Wade Inn is about the legacy, of course, the legacy of Dr. Gibbardar Mason integrating the Biloxi beaches. Dr. Mason was my birth doctor, and not only that, nine out of the 14 kids my mother had that he delivered. So he's definitely an inspiration in our life. And that concludes my report. Just thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Crew at Neptune had their spring party. It was delayed. They had it down at Point Cadet Plaza. It was really nice down there with the splash pad and everything working. I do notice, and there were some engineers with us that kind of pointed out, we may want to start at least identifying maybe the repainting of it. There's some rust and everything on the metal, so somebody better check that out. They recommend it before it gets too far along and make it a little bit more expensive. On the amended budgets, Mike, that you mentioned, are you going to, are those going to be resolutions that are going to come down in amended budget or budget amendments? Or how are we going to tackle that?
Well, there'll be a sort of a combination. You know, what we did, it's the first flush of things, is look at where we are right now. And I think the numbers that we have are year-to-date and encumbrances, as well as year-to-date expenses, where we're all with regard to the budget. And looking at items, not so much trying to do a tremendous amount, but, you know, first, the biggest hit was in not billing vacancies. You know, our directors, we met in order to say, what do we need for the next 30, you know, the next quarter? And I think that's the attack, and that's a pretty good chunk of money that will fill that probably $4 or $5 million hole that we're trying to, you know, gather up. Again, we probably had, you know, during the emergency stage, a million or so, million three, million four worth of extraordinary expenses that may be reimbursed through FEMA, and we've got that handled. So the immediate move was to look at what we're going to save as far as the budget in not filling vacancies between now and October 1. Then the other supplies and services of the four categories and capital items too. So we're in data gathering mode right now, but we're encouraged about where, you know, where we're going to fill that up. But it may be a combination of some budget amendments, which is we'll be reducing the budget we'll be spending. And then realistically, looking at the gaming, sales tax, and other hits that we're going to take. But, you know, we're working this continually, and I think over the next week or so, I think, Mike, you're scheduled to meet with each one of the directors to go over the nuts and bolts of what we've actually proposed.
So what they got, Councilman, is they got a spreadsheet that shows what their original budget was, what their budget is now, and essentially what they've got to live on for the next 90 days. And as the mayor pointed out, of the round about $2 million that we've stripped out of the budget, 1.6 of that is, 1.5 of it is just vacancies that we're not going to fill. Now, but we will fill them in the new budget year. But these are eight or 10 firemen, three or four police officers, some construction workers. These are all positions that are vacant because the people left and we haven't filled them. And that's the main driver of the $2 million that we are trying to rip out of the budget. Now, each one of the department directors is going to get a chance to look at that draft revised budget and come back to us to tell us if there's anything they can't live with.
Okay, once it's finalized, can we get a summary?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine.
Real quick, I don't want to get beat up. Sherri Beal, I need to give a shout-out to her and her crew because they did a marvelous job too. I know she's not, probably not in here, but just wanted to, for the record, I didn't want to get beat up. Thank you.
Really noted for the record, sir. I wasn't in town, so I was away during this weekend's events, but I followed on social media. Wish I could have been there. It looked like it was a pretty peaceful and well-participated event. Ms. Labata, if you would, I wanted to discuss with you the paving schedule and also talk about the concrete siding and sidewalks on Sunkist, but if you'll give me a six-foot conversation after the meeting.
I think they cut that out of the budget, Councilman.
No more?
They cut that out of the budget.
They cut six-foot conversations out of the budget? Because that's what I took from that.
Yeah, Council, just, you know, FYI, our problem is the general fund. That's where the problem is. But we're still going full speed ahead on capital projects because that's different money, and that's not money we can use for operating budget. So, you know, the pace of work in engineering is breakneck. I mean, they are up to their eyeballs in bids and opening bids and awarding contracts and starting work. I mean, there's an awful lot going on, and that's not going to change. That's not one of the places we're cutting.
Thank you, Mike. That will conclude my report, and we will move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
The move is.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped citizens' comments. Please forgive me. If we have anybody on this right-hand side of the room that would like to speak, please come to the front. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and your address for the record. We have 45 minutes total, three minutes per person. Anyone on this side of the room? Anyone on the left side of the room, my right-hand side of the room? Anyone in the back? There being none, now we will move to the policy agenda or the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by?
I'll second it.
Councilman Barrett, seconded by Councilman Gines. Discussion? Councilman Gines, discussion?
Oh, none. I'm good.
Councilman Glavine, discussion?
The only one, I know we got a substitute resolution, and it's dealing with Fire Station 10. 60 grand of utilities, of electric bills, or what is that?
No, it's not just utilities and electric. It's their municipal tie, it's a power loss.
Okay.
There are four of that is utilities, but there's a lot of, the job trade or...
For 13 days? Okay. I'm just trying to frame it, okay?
It's more than 13 days, but it's...
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Is that all? You have Councilman Glavine?
That's it.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, on item 5F, deals with the Lee Street Boat Ramp. And I didn't know we had a boat ramp out there. I'm not a big boater, but if you say we need to do that, we need to do that. But it did trigger another thought, and that was, because I go through Hiller Park every once in a while, and they have a small boat ramp there. And is it a single ramp or a double ramp?
Your boat's hit it one time.
Right, and...
When I was there the other day, there were 24 cars and about 15 trailers. It was on a full day. That's about how many people were launching.
At Lee Street or Hiller Park?
At Hiller Park.
Hiller Park, yeah. It's just, do they have enough parking? Do we need another ramp there? Or, because I go by sometimes and it's packed, and I know, you know, it depends on when you go, the weekend, late in the evening or whatever, but...
They all want to go to Lee Street.
Lee Street is kind of a hidden jewel.
You gotta go to Hiller Park.
I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you're right. We could use more parking.
But what I'm thinking is, can we make some improvements to that little boat ramp? I guess the bumpers or whatever you use when you're coming and going. I used to have jet skis and went out there, so I don't have many more because I couldn't stay on them. I tried.
No, it's needed, and we will try to be creative in what we can apply. But, you know, those kinds of facilities are more and more, you know, used.
Right, so it may be a little late this year, but maybe for next year, if we could get that going to at least apply for some of these grants.
Absolutely. You know, we're asking 14 or 15 million, just so, and we've been doing that since '16, and not that we've been, you know, but we, you know, we have to keep those requests going. A lot of money is generated for the Tidelands through, you know, our Tidelands leases primarily with the, you know, the eight casinos. And will be more and more. So we're going to ask for everything we could possibly use with the spirit of what it's about, tourism, quality of life, and recreation, and, you know, peers, those kinds of things.
We could just get some, get a grant or... We could just get some, get a grant or two out there to, just to help with Hiller Park. I don't know if there's any way to expand it, or if you have room to expand it. I, I just know it seems that, that a lot of people use it.
I think the parking, we could certainly expand the boat ramp launch facility, but, you know, the parking, we could, uh, you know, we have some opportunities there too, I think.
As the council will have noticed, this is grant season.
Yes, it is.
Two meetings ago, you, we approved submitting a build grant, which was a, uh, ten million dollar ask from the U.S. Department of Transportation. At your last meeting, you approved seven Go Mesa grant applications. And on our meeting today, I, I think there are five or six tidelands grant applications. So this is the season, and we're trying to fill, put a full basket up on the?
And that season ends just here at the end of June or whatever, but that's why it's a little late for, for Hiller, that launch out there, but sure would be nice to maybe look at that next year or get something going out there. Thank you.
On the thirty-six thousand, what are you getting for that? I thought you had a plan for Coon Street. So what is this thirty-six thousand for?
For Coon Street, what, what item were you talking about?
We're talking about the design contract?
Yeah.
Which, which item?
I thought you already had that.
Five?
What is this?
Five what?
You had a designer ready, you already showed him, pictured it and everything.
I went to design, that was a rendering. I think you saw it, the renderings with the application about what we're doing. It's not a, a design yet, you know? But again, this is an application. We've developed some renderings, as we did last year, uh, with Coon Street expansion. Uh, so, uh, what we have resubmitted, I think it's up there right now for Coon Street expansion last year, Mike, wasn't it? Uh, as far as, uh?
Being looked at right now.
Yeah. Uh, but it's not designed. It's the renderings that some of the engineering firms have done, and all these applications. So that they, you know, as they analyze this thing, have a concept of, uh, what we're asking for if we're awarded the grant.
But you asked for the same thing, the two ramps on the east side?
Yeah, well, the expansion of the, yeah, the, the west side is owned by private property, so as far as expansion, I think Johnny Beck, Peter, is that who owns that property?
Johnny Beck owns the property. That's where the park is.
To the west. Yeah, that's right, okay. Well, anyway, uh?
I know your club of interest isn't going that way and having y'all put something on the other side of pecs property, like a ramp. If you put one on each side, you'd be way better off.
Well, anyway, we submitted what we, you know, what we've done, and we've been talking about last year. Basically, we, we resubmitted what we did last year, and that's what this, this, this application is.
You know, some things we need to work together and get these things done.
Y'all, we have been working together, so I mean, yeah, that's the whole idea, is to work together, see this up there.
I'm not going to chew on the east side, not going to, that's not going to fly, you know? Not going to do that. But I mean, I'm willing to work with you, willing to try to get the money to do these things, but I mean, you just got to, I already expressed my opinion to you before, and I've changed a lot. Yes, sir.
I would say, I, I want the council to understand what we're being, what we're asking of you today. On these projects, we're asking for permission to submit a grant application. Now, that's the first bite of the apple, but then, then we'll, if we, if we are successful and we get the, the grant, at that point, we go back and accept the grant, and then we complete the design, so there's many opportunities. And what you're seeing right now is a concept and a rough estimate. So that's all, all we're asking for is to be able to apply for the grant. We're not saying that the diagrams that you see are exactly what's going to be built, that there's going to be exactly two ramps, that there's going to be exactly this many parking spaces. All we're asking for is, at this point, is permission to submit a grant application to try and lock in some, have an opportunity to, uh, to, to get a, some, move forward and get some money. There'll be many other opportunities to have other bites at the apple, at the DRC, the Design Review, uh, the, the Planning Commission. We'll have to come back to council. There'll, there'll be many bites at the apple down the road on, on, on these projects. But there, unless we submit an application, there won't be an apple. So what we're asking for, again, is just permission to, to submit a grant application for, for example, the Coon Street Boat Launch, for a certain dollar value, and all we're giving them is a concept of what it would be, but we're absolutely not locked into any specific design.
That's fine. As long as, when it's time to look at these things, after we get the money, then, then we can sit down and get, set the thing up the right way, to benefit everybody. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was actually remembering, uh, those launch over, well, like, um, years ago, I'm planning one, stretching, back after, um, I got my, 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 actually, this one, here, it was so, uh, that's why I'm starting on, not a, a lot of those, that, the, the licensing application, where you submit a consultation to your apartment, that we have the city and ones that are, like, labor, and, 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 back and forth on that, but we did, we, I had some money, and, and, that, that would want to be used to?
So, uh, Councilwoman, we're talking about a, a grant application to, to make improvements to the, to the boat ramp, to the boat launch, okay?
I have a word for it.
Uh-huh. Okay.
What does that mean? If somebody, if somebody, if?
Okay. Well?
I think, like, about, it's, it's, walls, and?
Boat ramps.
I can, I can help with that. Basically, it's an all-concrete ramp. There's nowhere, whenever you put your boat in the water, to tie it off. And so you're basically putting it against a concrete wall while you go park your trailer. And so it needs a little pier to, when you put your boat in the water, you can just, um, tie your rope off to a cleat, and, and, so it's, it's not a major deal, um, but it does need that, and that's why people don't go is because?
It's making it more user-friendly, so to speak.
Yeah, you just risk, you just take a risk if a wave comes through there of your boat getting gashed all up by the concrete.
Well, we don't have to wait on tidelands to, to look at what we can, can do, you know, with the budget we do have. And, I mean, it's not a big, shouldn't be a big-ticket item to address those kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And since we're on boat launches, uh, I was back there last week, the Lee Street, the one we're, we're talking about, and speaking with the harbor master, he spoke of getting some cameras back there to enable them to kind of see. Right now, I don't think they have computers or anything in them, so if we can get some computers and cameras where they can watch in real time, to kind of watch over the whole area. Because a lot of, a lot of times, it's hard to, to see the things. And of course, uh, like you said, it's a hidden jewel, but if we can kind of, uh, clean that up in, on the back of Lee Street, it would, um, probably have way more use than what it's having now.
And I think, you know, with Oscar Renn, that was a lay-down yard, and that kind of disguised the whole thing. Now, it's somewhat cleaned as far as, uh, what was on the concrete, uh, and, and things below the surface, but, uh, no, it, it is, uh, very useful.
Yes.
Uh, boat, uh, launch and, and parking area.
It's a good ramp, it's a good area.
So, I mean, we've got a lot of opportunities, and, and we're just trying to make, maximize what we have, so, uh, we're asking.
Yeah, but technology is, I guess, is what I was saying, technology, like computers and, and video, uh, cameras, where they can see them go on and come off and things like that when they're there. That's just what it was kind of relayed to me.
On, on the, the Lee Street ramp, you asked for five hundred thousand dollars. Are you going to double the size?
Yes.
What are you going to do with it?
Yes, double the size. So you can put four boats in them instead of two boats at one time.
Okay, so that, what are you going to do to the canal?
The canal's fine.
Pick it up to handle it?
Yeah, the canal's fine. Uh, Christie might follow.
Yeah. Probably two years ago, so it's, it's?
So it need to be dredged again? You did that two years ago.
Maybe so, especially after the, but really, that's kind of funny, I don't think there's no way you should now, or, you know, sometimes they hold up the big steel, or truckloads up there.
Yeah, but it's still doable. I mean, it's a, it's not a big-ticket item, what we think, to, to make that a, a premier launch and, and, you know, off the beaten path, so to speak, that, uh, you know, off of Bayview, uh, you know, it's a natural thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a nice ramp back there. You, smaller boats, you could probably do four at a time back there right now, smaller boats, you know, fifteen, sixteen footers. But I mean, they're going to be, another one would be good, you got a lot of parking too.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
George, you have anything else on the consent agenda?
No, that was a couple of things I wanted, that was, I'm going to say, there's one more. On, on B, have we opened up all the, the medical, has that been opened up with the medical doctors, could I could see their patients do electric surgery? I mean, that's, it's killing these hospitals, because they all hung up on COVID-19, and yet these, what we need is people taking care of the heart, the knees, the back, the legs, and we got back into allowing them to operate?
Yeah.
I mean?
Yeah, that's all clear.
Say again?
It's all clear, yes. Yes, we have, it's all clear.
Yeah. Hospitals are?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, that's, that was huge, that's a ton of money. I just wanted to double-check on that one. That's probably about it right there, I think. Robert?